To represent. So the NAACP's efforts extend to helping to inform all voters to assist them in choosing wisely. So, once we get beyond, you know, registering, getting people onto vote, making sure they have all the logistics of participating in this process, we extend that to educating them on policies, procedures, integrity, values of whom they're voting for. So that's very important. So hence tonight's forum. And I don't want to take up a whole bunch of time because I think that we want to hear from our candidates. So our moderator tonight is Michelle Simpson. So Michelle was born and raised in the NAACP. She's a professor. She's a radio host. She's a fierce academician who's committed to her students. She's an innovator and a worker. Michelle's accomplishments or work could fill a shipping container. But mostly, I think, most important for us in our community is that she's a yes and better person. Rarely will Michelle say no. She'll tell you and encourage you to do it better and jump in and help you do that. We can't ask for more than that in the NAACP. I'm grateful that she's here and helps us. So, Michelle.
And that, thank you very much for that very generous introduction. So everyone, welcome. And again, let me introduce myself. I'm Michelle D. Simpson. I'm an associate teaching professor at CU Boulder. And I have both the pleasure and honor of moderating this evening's NAACP hosted city council candidates forum. So ballots had been sent. And on Tuesday, the 2nd of November, voters will weigh in on five city council seats along with several city ballot measures. So we're here to learn more about you, about the eight individuals who are here this evening that we hope to not only hear from, but learn a bit more about, and who will perhaps fill those five city council seats. So in the spirit of transparency, I'd like to add that Mark Wallach sent his regrets for not being able to join us this evening. And secondly, I'd like to add that after sending several invitations, the NAACP civic engagement team did not hear back from Steven Rosenblow. So given the format of this evening's forum, it is really the goal of the NAACP that you candidates will learn more about the hopes, the challenges, the concerns and aspirations of a variety of members of the Boulder community. So candidates, you are invited to listen to three, four, I'm sorry, four. I keep thinking three, but four Boulder community members tell their stories. So we've created that format so we can center these four community members and their experiences. And then you'll have an opportunity to interact with them. You will be given an opportunity to respond to what you hear. Responses will run no longer than three minutes. And we'll do our best to weave questions into the, again, conversation that are coming from those out in the Zoomosphere. And since civic engagement is so much a part of the NAACP, national as well as local, and most especially, the Boulder County NAACP, we believe it's never too early to start. So we have invited several Boulder High School students, Ami Diata and Sorin Gangay. And they are going to help us through this process. And the way they're going to help us is they're going to select which candidates will respond when and to what question or story. Okay, so they're going to be leading that effort. In addition, we would ask you to really listen and listen to what you hear. That's the whole point of this. It's our hope that perhaps you walk away with some knowledge you didn't have prior to this evening, some wisdom you didn't have prior to this evening. And that is true for everyone who is participating in this process. So for this portion of the forum, what we want to do is we want to engage in candidate introductions. And I thought it best that we just stick with alpha order. And I'm guessing that at this point in the actual campaign process, you're well-practiced and encapsulating yourselves. So you will each have 30 seconds to tell us about you. So Matt, just given the luck of the draw, your last name, you are first in line, so please step up, tell us a little something about you. And please feel free to start.
Thanks, Michelle, and thanks, Nat, and thanks for everyone at the NAACP for hosting this. This is an incredible opportunity to speak with more members of our community. So I'm really happy to be here. So I'm Matt Benjamin, and I'm running for Boulder City Council. I've lived in Boulder 21 years, and I live in South Boulder with my wife and my two young kids. My son is six and my daughter is three and a half. So being that age of working family, feeling the stressors of COVID and trying to work and this crazy insanity, trying to run for city council as well. I guess we're suckers for punishment in that sense. Well, my background is teaching astronomy and astrophysics at CU Boulder and running the planetarium on campus for about 15 years.
Matt, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it looks like those 30 seconds have just flown by. So we're gonna have to pause here and hopefully learn kind of the rest of your story as we proceed this evening.
Sounds great.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that. Next, next up is Michael Christie.
Thank you, Michelle. I'm gonna try to talk super fast. I'm a family law lawyer by trade. I'm a certified mediator. I volunteer at the Boulder Shelter for the Homeless. I am a veteran of the Air Force where I served as a JAG officer and was deployed to Kuwait and Afghanistan after 9/11. I also sit on the Cannabis Licensing Advisory Board and advise city council on issues in the cannabis industry. I also volunteer at Community Mediation and Resolution Center where I mediate landlord tenant issues. And I do some restorative justice cases where I help teens who get in trouble. My hope is to bring my mediation skills to council and use that to unite people and help us work to find some common solutions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. So next up is Jacques De Colo. Jacques?
Hi, thank you for having me. My name's Jacques De Colo. I'm 25 years old and I'm a Boulder native. I was born and raised here. I left for school, went to Western Washington University where I studied hemp sustainability and policy to implementation of sustainable agriculture, bringing a sustainable crop to market, understanding drug policy and all that sort of stuff, but all tied into social justice. And I hope to bring that to Boulder City Council. I'm running for Boulder City Council on an environmental platform to make Boulder one of the most sustainable cities in America. This includes solar grant increases, gray water recycling, and free electric autonomous transportation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up is Lauren Fulkers. Lauren?
Thank you for inviting us here today. I'm Lauren Fulkers, and I have lived and worked in Boulder as an architect for the past 10 years. I have the privilege of running for city council. While the rules and restrictions on who can run are reasonable, the barriers to this and many other opportunities in our community keep access out of reach for many. On council, I will work to address this along with our affordable housing crisis and our climate crisis. As an architect and sustainable design specialist, I understand opportunities and challenges from both a policy level and a practical level. And I look forward to using the skills I've gained to implement creative solutions that leave none behind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Nicole, Nicole Spear.
Hi, my name is Nicole Spear. I manage a brain imaging research facility at the University of Colorado Boulder. I'm also a PhD scientist, a mom, and an avid volunteer. If you'd like to learn more about me, you can visit my website at nicoleforthewordflr Boulder dot com. Mostly what I want to say at the start is just thank you for putting this listening session together. Thank you to the storytellers for your willingness to share your stories and experiences with us. Thank you to Professor Simpson and President James and the NAACP Boulder County organizers. And thank you to all the participants for being here to witness.
Thank you so much. Next, David. David Takahashi.
Hi, I am 30 years resident of Boulder. I have raised two daughters. They graduated from Boulder High School. Climate drives everything. Refresh public engagement, direct democracy, integrity, walking the torch, and bring more unheard voices to the table. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Next, we have Dan Williams. Dan?
Hi, my name's Dan Williams, running for Boulder City Council to make Boulder a place for all of us. And in fact, that's the theme of my campaign. I work as a lawyer doing commercial litigation and civil rights litigation in a firm here in town. I've volunteered and co-counseled actually with the NAACP of Boulder County, with the ACLU of Colorado, and with other organizations to fight for justice. Look forward to talking with you about the various issues tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dan. Tara, Tara Weiner is up next.
Yes. Hi, my name is Tara Weiner. As you know, I'm running for Boulder City Council. I moved here about 10 years ago with my three daughters and my husband. Now they're all grown up. They are 27, 30, and 32, and they're also dedicated to public service. I'm on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which I love. You know, I'm born and raised in Brooklyn, so I'm a very direct communicator. And people like that I speak my mind, but they also trust what I say. And I'm a good listener. With my 25 years of my own business as well and collaboration, I just want to say my favorite thing about running for city council is going door to door and listening to what the people have to say whom I would represent.
Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, all of our candidates here this evening. You've heard about storytelling. We have talked about storytelling and featuring that as part and parcel of what we are offering this evening. So we're going to dive right into that. And so in introducing our storytellers, we've decided to actually go in alpha order as well. So first up is Zen Aguest. Zen, would you begin by telling us a little bit about yourself, kind of centering yourself in Boulder?
Sure. Hi, I'm Zen. I'm a senior this year at CU Boulder. I'm studying international affairs and psychology. But I've actually, I'm 22 now, but I've actually been in Boulder for the past 11 years. I moved here when I was 11 from Memphis, Tennessee. So I've gone to middle and high school here, and now I am continuing my education at CU.
Okay, so Zen, tell us a bit about your Boulder journey.
So like I just mentioned, I moved here when I was younger from Memphis, Tennessee. If you know any of the demographics about Memphis, it's a very diverse city and a very large black population, like me and my family. So coming to Boulder, it was a large shock. Even from that young of an age, I could definitely tell that it wasn't what I was used to, and it would probably take a little bit of adjusting. However, I figured that this adjusting would probably happen more simultaneously than it did. When I came to CU, I noticed that that transition wasn't over for me, especially being more centrally located in Boulder. My parents moved us to Lafayette, so I wasn't necessarily in the city of Boulder. But coming to CU and living off-campus in Boulder, as well as the dorms for a year, I was able to kind of be directly in the climate of Boulder. And that was still definitely a relatively jarring experience for me, I would say.
Zen, would you say a little bit more about that?
Yeah. So Boulder, I think, has this air of being kind of like a utopian society in a way where people are shielded from different experiences, negative experiences, I would say. And going into college, I hadn't really experienced much racial tension in Boulder beforehand. And then, once I was out in the city as a young woman, kind of on my own without the protection of my parents, I guess you could say, it was brought more to the forefront of my mind. And I've experienced racial slurs in the city. I've experienced being watched more intently than other people my age in stores. My friends have experienced those same racial slurs that I have. And it was at a point where I had been here for so long, but I felt like this wasn't the place for me anymore. And I didn't really see why I was still living in this city. And so I think it was very isolating and kind of off-putting.
So Zen, I would ask you to address, as you've been doing, but to specifically address these candidates who are running for city council, what would you want them to not only understand, because you've done such a great job of sharing your story, but what is it that you might want them to tackle or to consider in their role as future city council members? What might, what might help that experience that you were just describing to us?
Yeah, I think that Boulder is in its whole a very welcoming city. And I think that it does have the resources to make it a more welcoming city for everyone, underrepresented groups included. And the university has its own resources for that in terms of like different spaces where people of color, underrepresented groups can gather. But in my experience, I haven't seen that in the city as a whole. So I feel like I would love to see like either some type of space or just some type of community within the community where people of color and underrepresented groups can gather and make it seem less like there's only a few of us, or less like it's so isolating and like we're outsiders, kind of.
Zen, thank you so, so much for sharing your experience with us. And now I'm gonna kind of turn to Ami and to Sorin and see who is up in terms of our candidates to reflect, to respond, to tell us what you heard. Tell us what, again, you might attempt to do as a member of city council after hearing Zen's narrative.
All right. Well, first up in the hot seat, we would like to welcome Matt Benjamin.
So Matt? Yeah, what, what do you want to, to say as a reflection or response to what you heard from Zen?
It's, it's hard to hear that. You know, I, I'm a privileged white guy, and there's no denying that I am sheltered from that experience, Zen. It, it is off-putting to me to hear that that is an experience that anybody has in this community. It's more off-putting that you're not alone and that many people have that. And you spoke of this sort of Boulder utopia. And when I talk to people who don't live in Boulder, they say that about this town. And then when you live here, you realize that that fantasy is not reality. And, and it's, and it's hard. And I can only begin to just try to empathize with the challenge that you faced from growing up and now being an adult in our community and what that has brought. I will say though, that, you know, my campaign is really focused on really that empathy and that equity and trying to listen and build trust. Boulder doesn't need to work hard to make this a better place for privileged white folks. It doesn't. What we do have to work extra hard on is making sure that we're welcoming and inclusive of everybody that wants to live, work, and play in this town. In many ways, we want to welcome people that want to take that utopian vision of Boulder and actually make it a reality. That's what my aspiration is for this town, but it can only happen if we put our actions with our values and we actually welcome those that want to be in our community. You know, it's just, it's just, it's hard to hear that people are experiencing racism, although I know it's the case, it's easy to look the other way. And so one of the things that, you know, you know, was sort of mentioned by, by Net was about Michelle being yes and better. Well, that's exactly what I want to do, is I want to make what we do yes, but better in terms of doing policies that allow more people to live, work, and play in our community and feel welcomed and not feel the hardships of being different from other people. We have to find a way to do better.
Thank you, Matt. So Ami, Sorin, who's next?
The next candidate for this response is going to be Michael Christie.
Okay, so Michael, again, similar to Matt, if you wouldn't mind responding to what you heard from Zen.
Yeah, Zen, first of all, thank you very much for sharing your story. And I mean, I can tell you that it's, it's disheartening to hear that story. You said that you're, you know, you're from Memphis, Tennessee, and that when you moved to Boulder, it was, it was sort of a shock to you. If you could imagine that being flipped in the reverse. For me, I grew up in a primarily white community, but in the suburbs in Southern California. And after I joined the Air Force, my first duty station was in Shreveport, Louisiana. And I literally thought that I had stepped back in time when I got there. I grew up surfing on the beach every day in California as a kid, long-haired surfer guy, and all of a sudden I show up at this, at this Air Force base in Louisiana with people driving around their pickup trucks waving the Confederate flag sticking out the back of the bed of their truck. That was a complete shock to me. And I think for me, what it did is it sort of made me recognize that I had, I had grown up in sort of this sheltered world where, you know, I can't, I can never pretend to stand in your shoes. But I can tell you, being in a position where I am now, where hopefully I'll be in a position of more of a leadership role if I do get elected to city council, that type of behavior, when you said that when you go downtown, you've experienced the racial slurs that you've been watched more than others when you're in a store, that is absolutely unacceptable, in my opinion. I can only sit here and tell you that I hope that we as a community can do better. It's a mindset, in my opinion. I think we need to start at the lowest level that we can. We need to hit our children when they are in grade school. I know that there's the program, the, the reading, reading to end racism. We should be starting that at the lowest level we possibly can so that our children grow up knowing that we are all equal and that we are all welcome in this community and that we should all have a voice at the table. It's, this is a very troubling and difficult, complex problem, but it needs to be, it needs to be eradicated. But I appreciate you sharing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. And just a reminder to everyone out there in the Zoomosphere, we welcome, more than welcome, any questions that you may have. You can place those questions in the Q and A. So just a reminder, just a reminder. So this evening, our second storyteller is Jen Lievovich. And Jen, I wonder if you are ready to share your story with us?
Yeah, sure. Hi, everyone.
Thank you so much.
Hi. My name's Jen Lievovich, and here's my story. I was originally born in the harbor of Indiana to two parents that through hard work and higher learning were able to enjoy their slice of the American dream. As their earning potential increased, so did our neighborhoods and access to the finer things the city of Chicago offered. While I was always attracted to different cultures and people that did not look like me, I lacked an understanding of the privilege I had. I thought everyone lived a life like me. As I grew older and my worldview widened, I came to understand that not everyone had the same privilege I did, much by paying attention to the diversity the city offered. I would go on to access higher learning at IU, working towards pre-RECs for admittance into the Kelly School Business. And later worked as a retail clothing and footwear buyer for a large independent retailer. So the value of education and independence were instilled in me at a young age. Life would happen and include a toxic and abusive marriage that would take me three years to finally leave. A certain type of codependence and complete financial reliance would keep me trapped until I coordinated a getaway that mimicked an after-school special. It was at this moment I realized the privilege I had was long gone because I was now at the mercy of the system with nothing and would pick up my first of many labels, a domestic violence survivor and a first-time system user. I was lucky to access a DV safe house where I was given a maximum stay of six weeks, not near enough time to start my entire life over. And because my ex-husband would continually find me and present a risk to my life, I moved three times until I finally received an offer to come to Boulder and stay with a friend. Little did she know that I had earned my third title, an alcoholic. This would present issues and eventually end this arrangement and lead me to the streets of Boulder, earning me my fourth label, homeless. It was not long before I began receiving tickets related to the daily life of being homeless, camping, trespass, and drinking in public, despite making myself as invisible as possible. In fact, I can provide you with my data. Within the height of my involvement in our local criminal justice system, which was 28 months, I received 51 citations, 46 of which were municipal court and five county. I spent a total of 266 nights in our jail and was involuntarily hauled to our detox 72 times. I cost our community nearly $60,000, which would earn me my fifth label, a high system user. I had tried multiple times to gain sobriety while homeless, but my attempts were always short-lived without the stability of housing. The concept of housing was a dream for someone homeless like me from 2012 to 2017. And instead, the answer was to send us to a program. And so the municipal court did, but not before creating a new position called a court navigator. By then, I'd frostbite on my left foot and earned my sixth title, chronically homeless. The court navigator named Elizabeth Robinson was able to see past all my labels and see me as a person and hear my story. I accepted the offer to attend Fortline and was able to seek specialized treatment for my foot. I began to attend Colorado State University in the undergraduate human services program, which much of my studies were driven by my experience in homelessness. I learned that life chances are really privileged points and that they don't always add up because life happens. I learned that all the times I thought I was being followed in a store weren't figments of my imagination, but that the unhoused community are the most discriminated against, largely because they are not a protected class. And I confirmed four things I learned from my experience in homelessness, which are that sobriety cannot be maintained without stable housing, that jailing me denied in my homelessness, and that it's not a best practice, that housing is the only solution to ending homelessness, and that labels don't solve problems, including homelessness. Thank you.
Jen, thank you so very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone.
So Ami and Sorin, who is up?
It is going to be Jacques De Colo.
Okay, Jacques.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Jen, for sharing your story. Yeah, it, it's a touching story to hear and it has a nice ending that you, you know, were able to overcome the adversity and, and get back on, on your feet. And it's tough because a lot of homeless people cannot, and it is a housing, a housing issue. It's also a rehabilitation issue. Boulder's homeless shelter, I was actually talking to a homeless gentleman this past Sunday about this, but Boulder's homeless shelter doesn't constantly monitor rooms, doesn't constantly monitor stalls. So people are still actively getting high inside the shelter, still actively using while other people are trying to become sober. And this gentleman I was talking to is on a path of sobriety right now, but he finds it near impossible to be sober in the same shelter with people where people are actively using. So I think increasing access to rehabilitation centers, building relations with homeless people to understand mental illness, what's triggering their trauma, how we can help them, help the system to get them into housing where they can actively try and be sober. And even if they do end up relapsing, that we are there to support them and try and provide options for more separation of complete sober living versus people who are just actively trying to get back on their feet. It's also a state and federal funding issue that has to be looked at. You know, it's not just the city alone. We spend far more than our surrounding cities on the issue of helping these people off the street. And we still have the largest homeless issue in the county. So we have to look at the county for support. We have to look at the state for support. We have to look at the state and the federal government to influence more funding for housing for these people because one city cannot just change this across the whole state. It has to be a statewide effort and a nationwide effort as well. And I believe in the city, what we can do is build strong relations with these people, actually have understandings. And I believe in the city, what we can do is build strong relations with these people, actually have understandings of their mental health issues and. Work together to rehabilitate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacques. Ami and Soren, who is next to respond to and share their thoughts with, with us regarding Jen's story?
Um, we asked that Lauren Fulkert's response next.
Okay, Lauren, thank you.
Thank you, Jen, for sharing your story and for highlighting the way we label people to avoid recognizing. Their personhood and their identity. I think, you know, I, I know you from outside of this. And I've heard, you know, parts of your story before, but. I appreciate you bringing that to light in this particular instance. I also want to thank you for the work that you do in our community. You know. Feet Forward is such an amazing program. As you know, I agree that housing is the only solution to end homelessness. And, you know, I'm a strong, I'm a strong advocate for creating day shelter services. Crisis intervention services. I agree with Jacque. I'd like to see us provide better sober living, accommodate, you know, sheltering and housing. And, you know, we've talked previously about peer counseling and how that would be a really important piece for the city to look at as well. I think that while none of those. Would solve this problem, what we need to do is kind, is try to address. These traumatic situations that people find themselves in as quickly as possible. In the most supportive way possible so that we can. Help avoid, you know, the way trauma tends to pile up. So, thank you for sharing that story and. Yeah, and for all the work you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Ami and Soren. It's fabulous having you here. So next, what we're going to do is we're going to hear from Ayana, Ayana Molina. So Ayana, are you ready to share with us your experience?
Yes, I'm ready. Thank you. My name is Ayana Molina and I'm a licensed professional counselor, a licensed mental health therapist. And I'm from New Orleans, Louisiana. And so, lived in New Orleans most of my life. And last year and this year, well, last year mainly was really, really tough. For me as a therapist, holding space for many, many people in New Orleans. And so, by the end of the year, I was completely burnt out. Completely overwhelmed and needed some. Rest and rejuvenation. And so my oldest son actually lives in Parker, Colorado. And so I had visited him a couple of times and the mountains were just amazing. So I decided to, to pick up and, and stay with my son for a little while and kind of research and try to find. What I was looking for, you know, just a little. Nature, some nature, you know, some solace. Some healing from all that I had gone through in 2020. And so, just venturing around the area, I happened upon Boulder. A friend of mine introduced me to a friend here in Boulder. So I met him for lunch. And we talked and he was like, oh, Boulder's perfect. You should come, you should come to here. And I was dropping him off home and got into a situation where I was kind of like backing up. And I almost bumped into a neighbor. I almost bumped into David, David Adamson. I just met him like that. And we began to talk a little bit and he was like, oh, you should definitely come to Boulder. And I was like, well, I heard some things about Boulder, like Boulder's is very expensive and I don't know if I could, you know, afford it. And he said, well, I think I might be able to help you. And so, since then, I've been living in Boulder, living in extremely affordable. Situation that David himself. Offered to me. And I've been able to really heal. I've been able to get. Better and, and just utilize the nature to, to really. You know, inspire me and, and get better so that I can help others again, you know. I had to change, you know, adjust my caseload so that I could get better, but Boulder has helped a lot. But now I'm coming to a, a place where there's some adjustments and changes happening with my housing. And now I'm kind of fearful and afraid that I won't be able to afford to stay here. I would love to stay here. But, as I, I said, I had to change my caseload so now my income has changed a lot. I'm a professional woman and I think I could add to Boulder and add to the diversity here. And, you know, add to the culture and climate here. But I don't think I'll be able to afford it. And I've, I've reached out to several places. And for housing and for thinking of, of housing because it's getting ready to end in January. And so. Even I, I know that I could add to Boulder, but I'm not sure if I could stay here. Because of the lack of affordable housing here. And so, that's my story. And, you know, it's, it's pretty serious in that. I may have to get back to New Orleans or get back to, you know, a place that I can't afford, which is, which is okay and fine, but. I wished that Boulder had people like me in mind, you know, people. Who really want to add to the space in Boulder, to the beauty of Boulder. You know, the wonderful greatness of it to add to that. And I wouldn't have to leave, but. I may just have to. And that's a shame. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. I think I can speak on behalf of everyone here. We really appreciate you sharing your story. And this issue around affordable housing, when I think of Boulder and I think of affordable housing. I often think that's an oxymoron. However, Ami, Soren, who do we have up next to reflect on what they heard from Ayana?
Um, next up, we have written down Nicole Spear to answer.
Okay, Nicole.
Thank you, Ayana, for sharing your story with us. And I'm so grateful that you're a part of our community. And that you came here and you found some healing after the year. And I would think that with myself and seven other hopeful candidate, helpful council candidates here. We may be able to, you know, hear a little bit more about the specific situation that, you know, you're looking for and try to. You know, think if there are some other, other resources that may not be so apparent to, you know, keep you in the community. And, you know, I recognize that I know that you've already done a lot of this work as well. So, you know, just be. I, I would be open, interested in talking with you a little bit more and hearing about what, what you've pursued. And, and where there, where there may be some other opportunities because I, I for one would love to have you continue to stay in our community. And, I mean, I think, you know, this, this issue of affordable housing. It's a tricky one for Boulder. I mean, we, we seem stuck a little bit in. In not recognizing the many ways that our policies have excluded people from our community. And the way that we make affordable housing harder than regular housing. Than, than housing that is, you know, high priced or luxury, that, that is a big issue for us in our community. I think that there are, you know, folks here who are running, who have some ideas on how we can start to change that. I always point especially to Lauren Fulkert's, our resident architect who knows a lot about. You know, of, of how our process of building homes and renovating homes makes things harder to build affordable housing. But I would really, I, I would just welcome some continued conversation here to see, you know, if there is anything that. That, you know, we, we can help connect you with so that you are able to stay in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you. So, we're looking at our last storyteller, Tim Thomas. So Tim, you ready? I think we are.
So my name is Tim Thomas. I've lived here. I'm 51. I've lived here for 29 years. When I first moved here from New York City, I lived illegally in a house with six other people. I had just met in a six bedroom house in the Gosgrove neighborhood. The seventh roommate lived in an alcove that led to the attic bedroom. Our rent was $1,800 a month plus utilities. As young restaurant and ski shop workers in 1992, we had to have that many roommates in order to survive. Most of us, most if not all of us were making around seven or eight bucks an hour. The one waitress among us made a little bit more. Once my mother, who lived in New York City by herself, became blind. I moved her to Boulder and enrolled at CU at the age of 31. I knew that if I was going to be able to support both myself and my mom, I would have to get a college degree, which I eventually did. I majored in political science and minored in black and Latinx studies. When the NAACP asked me to tell my story for this listening session. I knew the story I would have to tell would be about my political experiences here in Boulder. From 1999 to 2008, I was heavily involved in, in Boulder politics. Went to council agenda committee meetings, study sessions, debates. I made public presentations. I attended new council member luncheons at the Flagstaff House, as long as I paid my fair share. I paid my bill. I even sat in the council dining room before regular meetings to hear what they were saying unseen by public eyes. Because open meeting laws allowed me to do so. All the while, I was studying more just and sustainable public policies in other cities. Which were in direct opposition to Boulder's restrictive ones. I'm not an environmentalist. I'm a just sustainability advocate. Not only do I believe in the concept of the three-legged public policy school of sustainability. Which includes social justice, economic vitality and environmental protection. I, like urban professor Dr. Julian Agimon, adds to this policy stool the legs of procedural equity. Who makes the rules? And geographic equity, what and where are the effects of these rules? These are my public policy lenses. That's how I look at public policy. Without procedural equity, who makes the rules? When I talk about changing the laws of physics here. People can continue to, so without public procedural equity, people, candidates can continue to make promises to our community and nothing will ever happen. According to the city's recently enacted racial equity plan. The city's current policies of constantly purchasing surrounding land in the name of open space. Restricting height and restricting density. All of these things are major contributing factors to the unaffordability of housing and the lack of black folks. The city of Boulder has to file a report with the Federal Department of HUD of Housing and Urban Development. Called the Assessment of Impediments to Fair Housing. This came about after the Civil Rights Act. In this report, the city openly states that one of the reasons, one of the impediments to fair housing in this city. Is because of our open space program and the height restrictions and stuff. Because ladies and gentlemen, as the co-author of American Apartheid. Dr. Massey wrote, a sociologist, segregation is still the linchpin of race relations in America. That being said, I'll should come to my question. I have a question. CU South is supposed to add, like I said, 1,100 units of badly needed affordable housing. Some of the things that some of the other storytellers have been talking about. If CU South is delayed and/or doesn't go through, what specific city actions? Will you pursue in order to bring about greater racial equity for black folks in Boulder in your first 100 days? And I would like to respectfully remind you that increased racial equity is the stated goal of the city of Boulder and the Biden administration. And as a follow-up, I would like to know if you've read Boulder's racial equity plan that was recently passed by city council. And if so, what struck you most about the document? Please be specific. Because I've read both the draft and the final version.
So Ami and Soren, who is up next?
Um, next up, we have David Takahashi.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, David.
Okay, thank you, Tim. I, do you know the Colonel, by the, by the way? From New York, worked service here and was in a similar situation that you are in. But to get to your questions. First of all. I have lost endorsements because I believe. That things like. Height restrictions are exclusionary policies that are preventing us from really recognizing. The. I think our super. Homogenous culture in Boulder is a direct result of. Exclusionary practices that have been extraordinarily successful. And in my 100 days, I would work very strongly to. Do a little truth and reconciliation around exclusion. Just get it out on the table. It's not a popular topic. Right? But someone has to do it. And I look at myself as a vanguard. I don't, I cannot tell you how many meetings I have been in. Where I hear the following statement, we are all white here. And I say, oh, hold on, wait a minute. Am I wearing my cloak of invisibility again? And, and it's, it's uncanny.
David, thank you. We're gonna have to end there just to make certain everybody's got time, but thank you so much. So, Ami and Soren, who is up next?
It's going to be Dan Williams.
Okay, Dan.
So Tim, thank you so much for sharing with us tonight. I really appreciate it. I learned a lot. I'm fascinated by the work you did going to council meetings, including their pre-meetings from 98 to 08. And, you know, reflecting on your question. I mean, this year is a watershed election. I mean, I just want to be just blunt about this. The times when you, those, that decade when you were going to council meetings. I mean, our city council was dominated by one group in town called Plan Boulder. And it didn't end in 08. I mean, it's continued until through today. There's been a majority members of Plan Boulder. Plan is an organization that has endorsed. Three of the people who are here today and did not endorse me. Plan has had a slow growth agenda or really a no growth, keep people out agenda for decades. And this election is, you know, and one of the reasons I'm running in this election is we can finally change this. This may be the most impactful election. So there are four candidates here who are endorsed by the progressives who want to take us in a, in a very different direction. So 100-day agenda, I mean, whether see, whatever happens with CU South, I have a 100-day agenda. I want to push. Number one on it is policing reform. And policing is a big issue and there's a very different, strong differences of opinion among the group who are here tonight on policing reform. In my view, that means implementing a STAR program immediately so that we can have social workers and other professionals responding. To 911 calls when people are in emotional distress and have those types of issues going on. Second is getting police out of things like routine traffic stops and nuisance. Second is getting police out of things like routine traffic stops and nuisance violation enforcement. We just don't need police to do that. And then reallocating some money from the police once they're not doing these other functions into social services. And the second piece of that is a, is a housing agenda. And I, it looks like my time's up on that, but making it easier to live in Boulder by supporting multifamily housing and development and all the things that Plan Boulder's been opposed to for all these years.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you very much. You know, it looks like Ami and Sorin were on it. I wasn't. So Tara, I'm going to draw you in and ask you, would you mind responding as well to what you heard from Tim?
First of all, Tim, I'm from Canarsie. So I said before, it was nice.
Brooklyn in Queens and went to Brown's High School of Science.
I went to South Shore, which is now closed, by the way. It wasn't great. We were able to take teenage problems instead of English, and here I am today asking my kids to write stuff for me. But, okay, that's a whole nother story. So I moved to Philly and I lived there and brought out my kids, and we lived in West Philly. And it was an incredible neighborhood because it was half-black and half-white. And we all, it was a community and we had a circle and all the kids played together. My problem was, as much as I loved it there, was the lifestyle of the bumper-to-bumper traffic. Anybody knows, probably Dan does, on six-seventy-six and the Scoogle and the lifestyle of working all day and everything, you know, and then sitting in traffic and then taking care of the kids, and I began to actually get panic attack. So I'm not comparing myself to Ayana, but it was the mountains that calmed me and changed my life, really. I gave up diversity, which I loved in Philly, for that because I just needed that change in my life personally. But I can tell you that for my grand, my kids all moved with us and we all live close to each other. But my kids are, because they grew up in this neighborhood and they loved the diversity. It was just part of who we were. I agree. Somebody else said that they love, I think it was Jen, that they, Jen Livovich, that they love different cultures. And I always embraced different cultures. I love to hang out with people that are not like me. It's the most fun. But my granddaughter, we're most worried about her here in Boulder because she's not going to get any diversity and everybody sort of looks alike, and that just isn't fun. But for me to listen to you give another perspective on the way you look at things has been incredible, and I'd love to have coffee with you and hear more. That I honestly say, because to me, there's, there's nothing that's better than learning from others. That's why I go door-to-door. Just, and that's why I'd love to have coffee with you. I'd love to hear more.
Thank you, Tara. You know, we have a number of questions in the, in the chat, and I want to try to get to as many of those as possible. And so, Ami and Sorin, you've been warned. You've been warned. So one of the questions that I want to share with, with everyone is thus. "We regularly hear about Boulder's answer to homelessness, but in reality, the city only pays five percent of the shelter's operating costs. If the city would contribute a realistic share, there is much that could be accomplished. Why is the city unwilling to contribute serious dollars to creating an answer that is both effective and that is truly Boulder's?" So, Ami, who do we have up to respond to that question?
Um, we asked that Matt Benjamin answers this question.
Okay, Matt.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. And, you know, this relates a lot back to what Jen was talking about and her lived experience. And, and more importantly, the work she's currently doing to pay it forward. And I just want to acknowledge what Jen's doing and continues to do. And I hope that we can find the resources to help her in other forms of service in our community to help our unhoused. To the question about the five percent, it's ridiculous. I mean, let's just, let's just call it out for what it is. I mean, Boulder has the resources and it should have the will to match those resources to invest in the services we need to protect those that are most vulnerable. This is a moral and ethical question that we're not, we're not rising to the moment to be. And, and I think, again, that comes down to what is that utopian view of Boulder? It's that we take care of those that need help, and in reality, we're just not doing that. And so I think it's really important that, that the city step up. And, you know, we have a shelter, but what we're missing is things like a day shelter. We don't have anything like sanctioned camping or hotels where our unhoused have a place to go. And that is what's critical. As Jen said, housing instability is the key for our services to have any success. And as you're likely going to hear other, other candidates maybe say, "Well, we spend all this money on services." Well, that's all for naught if we don't have an effective way for those services to reach our unhoused and vulnerable people in our community. And so this is absolutely about investing in those shared values. And if it's like myself or others that share the value of lifting up the most vulnerable, especially our, our unhoused, and giving them a chance at success, then making these investments is actually rather simple. It's just a consistency of matching your actions to those stated values. And so absolutely, yes, I want to see us spend more money, and I want to see us invest in the resources, the hardened resources, not just the tacit ones, but to really lift up our unhoused and give them a chance of success in our community.
Okay, well, Matt, thank you. We're going to move to another question. As soon as your moderator can get us there. Let's see. So the question is, what is your strategy? So we're getting specific now, okay? Not kind of the abstract, but getting more specific. What is your strategy for bringing more affordable housing to Boulder? So, Ami, Sorin, who's up next for that question?
It's going to be Michael Christie.
Okay, Michael.
Thank you, Michelle, and thank you, Sorin and Ami. So my specific strategy would be, one, I mean, we've got a number of, of tools that I think we have accessible to us. One, we have the voter-approved Down Payment Assistance Program, which allows at least an entry point for, for people to gain access into Boulder. I certainly recognize that that process, creating a permanently affordable deed-restricted house, does not typically generate the type of generational wealth that people usually associate with homeownership, but that is, that's one lever. Because of the pandemic, that, the, the funding for that measure has not really taken off. So one of my specific strategies early on, if I get elected, would be just to re-implement that, get that off the ground and get that process moving. I would also see, like to see us taking a look at rezoning some of our older dilapidated strip malls, where we can build a mixed use of housing options for people at all stages of their life. So I'm talking row houses, cottage houses, condos, duplexes, where we can create an affordability model, where these, these sort of what I'll call walkable neighborhoods would be centered around a transportation hub to help reduce the impact on climate, where these people living in these, these, these newer communities would have access to alternative forms of transportation other than SOB travel. I would also, what the, one of the incumbent candidates, Mark Wallach, who's not on this call tonight, has been talking about decommissioning the municipal airport. I don't know the fine details of that, but if, if that is something, I would like to have a meeting with all the stakeholders involved in that process. That would allow us to provide anywhere from two thousand to three thousand affordable housing units. So if that is something that we can kick off the ground, I would also like to implement that. So in terms of specific strategies, I'd like to have that conversation with stakeholders and see if that is a viable option for us.
Thank you very much, Michael. So our next question is this. "Defund the Police as a Movement Calls for Moving Funds from Policing of Issues Such as Homelessness and Mental Health Crises, Not Ending Policing. Do the candidates support moving funds from the largest portion of Boulder's discretionary budget, policing to alternatives to police such as mental health responders and addiction and mental health supports?" So, Ami and Sorin, who do we have up next for this, this particular question?
It's going to be Jacques De Colo.
Okay, Jacques.
Yeah, I mean, defunding the police is a very interesting term that was coined. I did protest in the Black Lives Matter protest in Denver last year. I do believe in reallocating funds from the police department. I don't necessarily believe in defunding the police. I would be interested in, you know, I think Dan talked about the STAR program that Denver's been doing. Bringing that to Boulder would be huge, be a great way to reduce the dependency on the police. Because right now, we already have a lower-staffed police department. So definitely looking toward, to bringing in these licensed therapists and these mental health workers who can go and help assist with nonviolent issues that are more emotional issues or stress issues or trauma issues or something like that would be great. In a general sense of defunding the police as it stands, though, the fact that the police have access to military-grade weapons and military-grade spending and stuff like that, I think is a little bit ridiculous. So we have to like look at reshaping our police to see what they actually are going to do to protect our community. I think that's a larger discussion for state and federal level as well, though. But in terms of the direct question towards reallocating, towards rehabilitation, mental health assessments, that sort of stuff, I'm definitely for it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next question. What is your commitment to the city of Boulder's racial equity plan? Who do we have up next? Sorin and Ami.
Um, next up, we have Lauren Folkert to answer this question.
Okay, Lauren.
So I was happy to see the city work on and implement our racial equity plan. I think that, you know, one of the issues that came up in the first reading of it was how zoning and land use have sort of a racist historical background and how we need to address some of those issues moving forward, how we need to use that in our thinking and our understanding when we're looking at updating our zoning and use codes. I think that that's a really important piece. You know, as an architect, that's caught my eye. But, you know, largely, as I see our city moving forward with this program, you know, I am why I'm supportive. One of the issues that I see is, you know, in our budget process, we did things like, say that we had looked at the budget through the, this lens, through the racial equity lens, and changed our decisions based off of that. But there was no real accounting of what were the decisions that were changed? What did we really do? And, you know, to provide sort of numbers and metrics to how we're implementing this. I think that it's really important that we don't just talk about how we've implemented it, and it's great, but we need to really have, you know, strong, the ability to critique that implementation by having an understanding of what's being changed.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. Next question. "What plans do you have in place to call on other areas in our county that have lacked homeless services since I have been here roughly ten years, specifically Louisville and Lafayette?" So, Ami and Sorin, who's up for that question?
Nicole Spear.
Okay, Nicole.
Thank you. I really appreciate this question. It is an important one because Boulder and LaMonte are really the only places that are putting money into services for people who are experiencing homelessness. I, I always look at the first solution to everything as starting to build relationships. And so to that degree, one of the things that, you know, I've been trying to do is to build relationships with people who are trustees, who are serving on other city councils to just to have those relationships in place so that we can start to put these regional solutions in place and start to work together. I think it's not just homelessness, it's housing, it's transportation. There are so many issues that cannot just be centered in Boulder that really need to be connected to the other community. And so for what I've done right now is having these conversations with some of the other neighboring councils to get their, start talking about the issues that are jointly affecting us. And those, those are absolutely things that I would like to continue. And I, I just, I really want to be having those conversations around how are we supporting folks within our cities who are experiencing homelessness so that it becomes more of a regional conversation rather than one that's centered just here in Boulder. I think also pooling resources is going to help us have more resources in order to solve these issues or to address these issues.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. Next question. "How will you work with your colleagues on city council and advocate, and advocate, I should say, for diverse community members?" So again, let me reread that. "How will you work with your colleagues on city council and advocate for diverse community members?" Who's up next? Sorin and Ami.
Um, next up, we have David Takahashi.
Okay, David.
Okay, so the key here is bringing our public into not only council, but boards and commissions and city staff. And being very clear about a diverse perspective rather than a echo chamber. And the way I would accomplish this is through something called sortition, which is a, if you think about the jury process of selecting a representative population and then increase that by, you know, a jury's ten, make it a hundred, and give people the opportunity to serve their community for a day just as they would if they were on jury duty. And getting those voices that we don't normally hear heard, that would be the way I would work with my council. I would increase their, their bandwidth, their exposure to the voices in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next question. What is your commitment to the city of Boulder's racial equity plan? So who's up next? And Sorin.
Dan Williams.
Okay, Dan.
So I'm, I'm fully committed to the city's racial equity plan. When I read the plan, you know, it occurred to me that our city staff in many ways are ahead of where the city is as a whole. So I feel that as a whole, our city talks a lot about being in, in an inclusive place and an inviting place, but, you know, we don't live up to that. And the racial equity plan, I think, was a real good faith effort to push us in, in that direction and have us do some real concrete things. One is this, you know, when council starts looking at its decisions through a racial equity lens, change happens. And I, just as one example, I saw recently where this worked was there was a development proposal for on Folsom and Spruce, and there was a discussion about whether to preserve some building, some piece of a building that had been built in the nineteen seventies. And, you know, Junie Joseph, I think, correctly said, you know, "Let's look at that through a racial equity perspective." And we could preserve this overhang that people think, you know, looks nice from the nineteen seventies. But if we do that, we're going to be locking families out of Boulder. So at a minimum, we should ask the question, "Is this reasonable?" And then, you know, she asked that the issue be referred to the Human Relations Commission, which is not something that had ever been done on these types of development questions. Some council people were taken aback by the idea, but I think ultimately there was a sense that, yeah, that would make sense. So I think asking these questions with decisions like that, with like decisions around building and all sorts of, you know, decisions around open space, decisions around access makes a huge difference. And I think that's what the racial equity plan is now pushing city councils to, which is a really great and welcome change.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Our next question reads as follows. "If elected, you will take your seat in November, when we will begin to enter the winter season. As is, we currently have one shelter offering a maximum of a hundred and forty beds, but we have an unhoused community of well over a thousand in this county. What are you prepared to do to ensure that no member of our unhoused community freezes to death this winter?" Ami, Sorin?
Um, we asked that Tara Wiener answers this question.
Okay, Tara, you are up.
I feel it's the city, the government's responsibility is to save lives and to make sure people are safe. So we have to look at every possible solution, which I'm not saying it's an easy solution. But first of all, it has to be one of the most important things to each and every council member to save lives. Every single life is important. Feel that deeply. So I was thinking, uh, as, you know, as far as what to do, there are hotel and motel rooms that might be empty. There are churches and synagogues that should be able to help. Obviously, there's not enough time to make another shelter. But we have to remember that we're a community, that we need to love one another. But we have to remember that we're a community that we need to love one another and that we need to open up the spaces that are closed now to make sure that people live and that they're fed. How we do that, we just, that's what the coun, that's what not only the council's for, but also our faith communities are for. To really, you put our heads together and our hearts together and figure this out before it's too cold. I'm not going to say that it's easy again, I really don't. I think that like housing, there are lots of little things we need to do. Now, there, there's obviously, you know, it's expensive, buildings are expensive, but if we do all the little things, we'll be able to save lives.
Thank you, Tara. So I'm going to take a bit of moderator's prerogative and, uh, ask a question. And the question is as follows. As you know, this forum is being hosted by the Boulder County NAACP. And as you, I'm sure all know, the NAACP is the largest, the nation's largest and most prominent civil rights organization. I'm guessing you also know that the NAACP Boulder County is so very deeply invested and involved in myriad issues in the Boulder community. So what can the NAACP membership expect? Should you be elected? In other words, what type of relationship do you want to cultivate, if any, with the Boulder County NAACP? Who's up? Ami, Sorin?
Um, next up, we're going to have Matt Benjamin answer this question.
Okay, Matt.
Thank you for the moderator's privileged question, because it's an important one as we sort of reach the end here. You know, if, if elected to council, what I find to be most critical is that we actually engage meaningfully with our community. And Boulder has had an issue where it listens to what I call the frequent flyers. The same few people, the same few groups. And that's what dominates the narrative. And I think what we have to do is lean into those that haven't been heard and lift their voices up and make sure not only that they're being heard, but we're listening to them and that their lived experience is actually driving our policies. Because that's really the only way I feel that we can be truly inclusive and welcoming is by not just listening, but taking it to heart and choosing to act on that. And so in many ways, this means setting aside a little bit the standard participation that's been in place and really lean into those that haven't had a voice. And where does that stand? That stands for what I feel is appropriate for election reform. I would love to see us, and since voting, voting, voting is so key for what the NAACP is doing, we need to finish the job by actually having real election reform that provides greater choice to people, but also just disa, disables these slates, which aren't healthy for our community because they're creating a binary choice. And when you have a binary choice, it's the people in the middle, the people who are, tend to be unheard that then aren't represented. And so we have to systematically make those changes, but only to do so, we have to lean in and listen and make sure that groups that are normally marginalized have not just a voice, but in many ways almost have a greater proportion of the voice so that we can rebalance the narrative in our community so that we can truly be welcoming and do the actions that are needed to do right by the equity plan that we have. And as Ben said, that equity plan is good, it's got goals, but we gotta act. And some of that starts with systematic changes at the top, but really fostering and facilitating everybody feeling like they have a stake in the outcome of where our community is headed.
Thank you. At this point in the forum, I'm looking at time, I'm looking at overall time. And there's a question I'd like to position to everyone. And everyone, I'd like you to take a minute to respond. Okay, so queuing that up. And the question is this. Becoming a candidate, a candidate running for any office, but in this case, running for Boulder City Council requires a strong sense of self. A sense that you offer something currently missing, something unique to the role of city council member. And I believe everyone who's been a part of this forum this evening would like to hear, what is that? In other words, what would you say that is? That you would be bringing to Boulder City Council that no other candidates, no current members of city council possess at this point? And so again, we'll go back to alpha order. And so Matt Benjamin, and again, everybody has a minute and we're going to be very strict on, on timekeeping, just so we can hear from everyone.
So again, I appreciate the question because at the end of the day, you know, everyone is hearing candidates use similar words. And in, in, in 60 seconds, hard to differentiate. So really, what is the uniqueness of various candidates? And I think that's an amazing question to ask. What I will say is what, what it makes me a unique candidate to serve on council for one is as of right now, we do not have anybody with a scientific background on council. And if I'm fortunate enough to get elected, and I hope also Nicole gets elected, then you can have two people with a scientific background that will literally lean into that experience of being an evidence-based decision maker and setting aside bias and emotion and really trying to logically look at what are our goals? And how do we find the right information to facilitate the actions to meet those goals? And that, I think, is something that's been surely missed because a lot of decisions that have been happening lately have been swung by emotion and things that aren't really data-driven. Um, our, our homeless policy has not been data-driven. And I think we need to get back to some of the basics and focus on some of the data there and dispel a lot of the misconception, misconceptions. The, the plight of CU South has been filled with misconceptions. And so I think it takes people with a scientific background to do that. What I would say I was also a differentiator is you've got experienced people on, on council currently, but we're losing 25 years of institutional knowledge with those that are leaving council. And the work that I've done over the last number of years, supporting campaigns, leading them, and then last year, leading the Armira Choice Campaign, so that everybody in Boulder now gets to elect our mayor using ranked choice voting. I have a unique understanding of not just our system, our bureaucracy, but how it works and how it doesn't. And so on day one, I'm going to be ready to help our community tackle these immediate and, and timely issues like COVID response, our unhoused, affordable housing, transportation, overall climate resiliency in our community. So I think it's really vital that we still look at the experience, but also that unique skillset of being a science person and an edu, and having that education and, and evidence-based decision-making model that'll help lead us to where we need to be.
Okay, well, thank you. Next up, Michael.
Thanks, Michelle. So, um, you know, as I stated earlier, I'm a family law lawyer by trade and a certified mediator. I've been mediating family law cases for about 15 years now. So if you can imagine walking into a room trying to untangle a, a marriage where you're dealing with custody issues, you're dealing with support issues. If, I feel like if I'm able to bring people in that environment together to find some common ground and come to some reasonable solutions, I can use that skillset on council. There's no one else on this panel who's had the, the amount of experience that I had being a mediator. Um, I'm also very involved in the community, um, volunteering down at Community Mediation Resolution Center. I volunteer at the homeless shelter, I sit on the Cannabis Licensing Advisory Board. I was an intern at the White House during the Clinton administration. I'm also the only veteran that's running for office. I'm a veteran of the US Air Force. I will tell you that I was raised by a single parent. I never had anything handed to me. I, I worked three jobs to put myself through college at UCLA. Um, I put myself through law school, bouncing between day classes and evening classes. Um, when I was in the JAG in the military, I sat as a bench officer, as a judge. So if there's anyone on this panel who knows how to look at evidence objectively and make a sound-based decision on the data and the evidence that is presented, I think I have probably the superior skillset in that regard. My hope is to bring my experiences to council, and I'm not pretending to have all the answers to the questions or the challenges that we're facing, but I do believe that I can add value to the conversations around them.
Thank you, Michael. Jacques.
Yeah. So the main reason I'm running is because I believe Boulder can do more to combat climate. We have to have every hand on deck to do everything we can to deal with this issue. Here's, um, and little to nothing has been done about it. It's important that we do everything we can to, uh, make Boulder the most sustainable city in America. In Colorado, we're headwaters to at least five other states' water supplies, and we have to do more to protect the water stores that we have. We have to be able to hold more water because of this 10-year drought that we've been experiencing for the last decade does not seem to be going anywhere. We have to work with XL to ensure that we're building solar gardens and battery storage technology. So that way we don't experience blackouts in the city. And then that way, we're hopefully 100% uh, sustainable by, I believe the goal is 2030, but I'd like to see it, uh, happen sooner. And my experience for advocacy, advocacy, um, I participated in Standing Rock. I went to the Dakotas when I came home for Thanksgiving break and said, I'll see you guys later. These people need my support more than my family needs me right now. I marched in downtown Denver yelling Elijah McLean's name, um, praying that we end this systematic racism in America. Working with, um, my friends and colleagues in Washington with the Indian reservations up there, with the Lummi Nation, to create more equity for them and their representation in Waukesha County where I went to school. I hope to bring that to Boulder, uh, to work with the Arapaho and the, uh, Cheyenne and the Comanche and the U. And I'm 25 years old, so I have a generational knowledge that's a little bit different than everybody else. I was raised in a different climate, I was raised with technology constantly around me. I understand how we can use technology to benefit everyone. I believe it's important that we have young representation on city government.
Thank you, Jacques. You know what? I, uh, teach ethics and clearly I'm not a mathematician. So what I want to do is ask our remaining candidates to keep your remarks to the question that I posed to 30 seconds instead of one minute, because we're not going to get to everybody. It's just not possible. So next we have Lauren, Lauren Folkerts.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, I'm an architect and attainable housing is the answer to so many of the issues our community is facing. So I'm going to go with what I see for us to address those. So we need to reduce barriers for mission-driven developments such as community land trusts and nonprofit housing organizations. Um, we need to encourage missing middle housing, gentle infill such as townhomes duplexes, triplexes and cohousing, and create policies that encourage permanent affordability through land trusts and deed restrictions at all scales of development. Small increases in density spread throughout the city and focused on transportation hubs will allow more commuters to live within city limits.
Thank you, and thank you for, for going along with the setup version. So I appreciate that. Nicole.
So I think what I have that's a little bit different is that I'm bringing inclusive leadership and management skills, particularly some characteristics of humility, openness and courage. Those of you who shared your stories and who are here tonight know far better than I do that people who look like me often say we care about equity and that we will be allies and advocates. But most of the time, our actions are telling a very different story. And when you call us out because our actions are inconsistent with our words, we get defensive and we center ourselves by talking about our intention rather than the impact we had on you. None of this is okay. And whatever happens on November 2nd, I will use my inclusive leadership skills to work for a city where everyone is seen and valued.
Thank you, Nicole. David, you are up next.
Okay. I bring, uh, outsider's perspective and an appreciation for outsiders being welcomed to local problem and solution process. I see the underserved as assets, and I will bring them in. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dan. Dan Williams.
So I think what's unique about me, I will be the only city council member who has sued the city repeatedly for representing, uh, people whose voices haven't been heard in the city. You know, I've been a champion for civil liberties and civil rights my entire career. And it's no accident that, uh, uh, racial justice and, um, diversity and equity are at the center of my campaign. You know, when I heard Zen and Jen Lovovich talk tonight about feeling excluded in Boulder, that's a problem that I'm ready to take on, and I really thank them for sharing their stories today.
Thank you, Dan. And lastly, Tara, Tara Wiener.
I love being last. Very humbling. Rather than suing people, I actually do like to bring people together and I go across, no offense, I love Dan. Um, I go across the aisle and I appreciate people, but I also appreciate what makes us different. And that's why I like to hear from everybody. I'm authentic and real and down-to-earth, and that is what people like about me. I love to go door-to-door and I'm going to continue to do that because I want to hear what makes people think, tick, how I can represent them well, and that goes for every single person in Boulder. I want to be totally inclusive.
Thank you, Tara. So we are nearing the end of our forum, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank everyone, absolutely everybody who participated. And once again, I'd like to thank the Boulder County NAACP. More specifically, the NAACP Civic Engagement Team that made this happen. That includes Cherry Rose Anderson, Chair Carolyn Love, David Adamson, Ralph Burns, Linda, Lynn's Roberts, excuse me, and most especially our Boulder High School Student Assistant, Sorin Gagne, as well as Ami Diata. And of course, thank everybody, those of you we can't see on screen, we know you're out there and you contributed such fabulous questions to help spur the conversation and deepen, deepen our understanding of what's happening and what's important to members of our community. And of course, for all of you, as I said, who have joined this evening, who have not returned your ballots, vote, get out there and vote if you haven't already. So Cherry Rose, I think you had some parting words that you wanted to, uh, to share with us?
Yes, thank you. I will be brief. Uh, I want to ditto everything that Michelle said. I thank everybody so much for, uh, participating, uh, tonight in our, uh, in our forum. I think, uh, it was a, you know, we are trying a, a new format here. So I appreciate your patience with a couple, uh, bobbles here and there. I'm so glad you could participate. Thank you so much to Zen and Jen and Ayana and Tim for sharing your stories and everybody for participating. I just want to highlight, uh, the words of our president. She, uh, she said at the beginning, uh, this is a democracy, but we are governed by the choice of the majority, the choices of the majority who participate. So, uh, yes, as Michelle says, get your ballot in. Uh, more importantly, all the ballots, ballots have been mailed. If you have not received a ballot in your mailbox, or if you have, it's not sitting on your kitchen counter right now, I want you tonight, as soon as you get off of here, to go to www.govotcolorado.com and check your voter registration status. Make sure that your address is right, get your, make sure you can get your ballot. Um, and remember that your ballot must be received, received, uh, by 7:00 PM. No later than 7:00 PM on Tuesday, November 2nd. So, uh, I strongly recommend using a ballot drop box to return your ballots rather than relying on the post office because your voice, um, your voice is too important. We need to hear each and every single one of you. We need your voice to make our city, um, our county, our state and our country a better place. Thank you all so much for being with us tonight. Um, I appreciate every single one of you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And once again, remember, we are but our stories. So again, a thank you, deep bow, all of our storytellers to Zen, to Tim, to Ayana, to Jen. We couldn't have done it without you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Everybody have a good evening.
Have a good night.
Bye, thank you.